Alright, can everyone hear me alright? I should've just folded up the first six rows of chairs. Thank you all for coming this evening. I know it's a beautiful evening out there. A lot of you probably have things you'd much rather be doing. And I appreciate you participating in this process. I just want to mention, the budget that the RSG Board puts together is probably one of the most important things we do for the district. It seems like the longer that I've been on the board, the sooner we start the process. It feels like this one started sometime around January with discussions with the Finance Committee. And we continue to have meetings with administration and amongst ourselves until we really hit the formal budget process in May. One of the goals and one of the things that the district has tried to do over the past few years is, we try to present a budget that meets the needs of the entire district, that serves our kids pre-K through 12th grade. And as the district becomes more and more entwined, we try to ensure that there is more accountability in the district amongst both students, staff, administrators, and that programming is consistent throughout the district. So that as kids move up through and reach middle school and high school, that they're all hopefully on the same level. This is not an easy process, and we always have to balance the needs of the taxpayers and the needs of the children along with the needs of the community. But again, I appreciate you coming out tonight, and I want to thank you for your support. So I'll start out with some long remarks, pre-pranked it, bear with me as I work through this, and then we'll move on to electing moderator. As directed, I Timothy Harkins, Chairperson of the RSG One Board of Directors and resident of the Town of Erussick in the County of Sagahaw and State of Maine, have sworn to notify the inhabitants of Erussick, Bath, Phippsburg, Woolwich, who are qualified by law to vote in town affairs to assemble at this time with the purpose of acting on the articles listed in the warrant dated on the 26th day of May in the year 2015. Here we go. Attested copies of the warrant were posted by May 6, 2015. Attested copies of the warrant were posted at Bath City Hall, Bath Green Library, Sagahaw County Courthouse, Bath Middle School, Bath Line C A, RSG One Central Office, as well as Fisher Mitchell. Diagnose, Bath Middle School, all being public in conspicuous places in the city of Bath and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Attested copies of the warrant were also posted at the Erussick Town Hall and Erussick Fire Department, which are public and conspicuous places in the Town of Erussick and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Attested copies of the warrant were also posted at the Phippsburg Town Hall, Post Office, at Tamar Bay Post Office at Sebastian Stace, Pine Tree Service Center, Phippsburg Elementary School, and Vincent Center Store, all being public in conspicuous places in the Town of Phippsburg and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Attested copies of the warrant were also posted at the Woolwich Town Hall, Woolwich Post Office, and Woolwich Central School, and the Woolwich Clipper Mark, all being public in conspicuous places in the Town of Woolwich and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Alright, now I've done that, let's get on to business. Article One, to elect a moderator to preside at this meeting. Is there a nomination for moderator? Yes?
The nominee, John Morse.
John Morse has been nominated as the monitor. Is there a second?
Second.
I hear a second. Are there any other nominations? Since there are no other nominations, we will now conduct the vote. I need five people from the audience to come forward and write their choice for moderator on a ballot. It's empty. Mike, may please collect the votes. Okay, I declare John Morse has been duly elected to serve as moderator for this meeting. John, would you please come forward and sign the oath? Do you want to share this? You want to read it, or if you want to read back to me, your choice.
I, John G. Morse, forth to swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state as long as I shall continue a citizen thereof so help me God. I just swear that I have discharged the best of my abilities and duties incumbent on me as moderator for this being according to the Constitution and laws of the state, so accompany me, go ahead.
Before we start, just a couple of rules that we need to rely by here. First of all, in order to vote for me, you have to be a citizen of the four municipalities that we are serving, and you should be checked in on up of the registered voters list each municipality. You can have your pink cards and a white ballot. And the white ballot will need for Article Number 15, so don't lose it. Secondly, if you have cell phones, please turn them off. Because if the one goes off, I see whose it is, I'm going to embarrass you by pointing you out. So do it before you're embarrassed. Also, I generally follow the rules that are in the main municipal moderators manual. However, I do have one rule that is for me and for you. It's to keep it under the KISS principle of keeping simple, stupid. I'm the stupid one, so I will only entertain one amendment per article at a time. We can have a whole series of amendments if you want to do it, but we're only doing one at a time. We'll vote on that and settle it before we do the second one, so that we don't get, I don't get confused. If you question the vote, if you stand up and say, "This moderator, I question the vote," vote. We will find a better way to do it so that we are accurate in what the type of vote is. I may bring some people forward and vote the hand to consider just me doing it, but that is your prerogative to say that you know what the vote is. If you wish to speak to the organization, please, the meeting, please put your hand up and wait till you are recognized by me. And also, you need to be, have the microphone to speak into, because this is being televised and people at home won't be able to hear it. We have Emma Harrington and Jack Martin, who are bringing the microphones along around you. So if you ask to speak, please keep your hand up so that they can find you and bring the microphone to you. When you get the microphone, make sure that you hold it close to your mouth. If you hold it over here, you cannot hear it, and you will sound the same way. So this is 101, public speaking, hold it up close. And don't worry about calling anybody on the board, because you're not going to. Okay, are there any other questions before we start? You've got your handouts that were on the back table there. And there is one of them talks about a correction to the warrant that was found out after it was printed and posted, and that has to be with Article 15. And we will talk about that when we get to that article. There is also a booklet that has all of the whole budget in it, in the breakdown and so forth. And if you have questions about that, why then I will refer you to some of the staff here that we have on stage. So we'll get started. Article Two, see what some regional school unit would be authorized to expend for regular instruction. The recommended amount is $10,500... $10,544,251. Who is making the motion?
I move the article as written.
You have a second? Okay, give a motion, a second, pass Article Two for the recommended amount. Is there any discussion or questions? Kathy?
Hi, I'm Katie Swraskin from Phippsburg. I'd like to amend this article by adding $7,100 for the half-day band instruction at Fitzbury Elementary School.
$7,100. Is there a second?
I second.
To amend. There's a second, okay? Is it somebody else who wants to talk?
My third.
Is there a discussion or explanation of the amendment?
This issue has been at the forefront for a few months now. And 29 years ago, our band instructor was hired for Phippsburg. And about three years ago, her position was cut to a half-day. But she has still managed to volunteer that half-day every year going forward, trying to get her half-day reinstated. And at this point, she won't be volunteering that time next year. And we will see cuts at Phippsburg if we don't get this half-day back, including decrease less than time with our students, possibly decrease if no per-grade participation. Phippsburg Band was the only band in the Memorial Day Parade yesterday. So I can't imagine a Memorial Day Parade without patriotic music. So I really would urge all citizens here to support this amendment.
Okay, Rick?
Fred Levy from the Town of Phippsburg. I think it was pretty poor yesterday for the Memorial Day Parade. And I am a veteran, 26 years, to see only the Pittsburgh Elementary School Band and St. John's Band in the parade. When the city of Bath has lost that school band, and they have the middle school band, and neither one of them is in the parade. I think it's pretty sad that you cut the money from this teacher that's been doing a fantastic job with the kids.
Any other discussion, comments?
Charlotte Szwansky from Phippsburg. I'd just like to say, you know, I've been working in Pittsburgh for almost 15 years now. Kathy Downing is like a rock at the Pittsburgh Elementary School. I've seen teachers and administrators come and go. I think we're on our sixth principal. Kathy Downing is still there, 29 years later, as her band director. Not only as a resource for, you know, the children, the staff, the parents, she brings community to our school and to the greater area. She does a remarkable job. We should be rewarding the teachers that excel and perform above and beyond. We should not be penalizing them. We should be looking at merit base and increasing, at least getting her hours back. She definitely goes above and beyond every day that we see her working in our school. So please support this her.
Okay, down here.
President Lady Bath. I have a question that's a point of information, which is, if this article, if this amendment does not pass, will Pittsburgh still have the same amount of music and band education as the other schools in the RSG One? In other words, are we funding students within our entire district at the same level? And then I guess the other point would be simply that there are a lot of teachers who go above and beyond in this district, and there are a lot of programs that have been cut in the last, you know, five to 10 years. And there are programs that are really important to the education line, languages that have been cut out of our high school and our middle school, as well as our elementary schools, that I think are at least as important. So I would encourage us to think about this a little bit holistically. So the question, you know, will there still be funding for the band director? Will students still get education? Are we talking about extra supplementary education, or the standard that the rest gets?
And Kirk, do you want to be, um, talk to them?
I'll do my best to answer it. Take Fisher Mitchell, the band meets once a week, near the end of this two-year, for 35 minutes. Then we have lessons that are group lessons once per week. At Phippsburg, right now, and again, since we alluded to this a few minutes ago, that Kathy is going beyond right now. What occurs right now is band meets twice a week for 45 minutes, and it's individual lessons once per week for 15 to 20 minutes. And at West Bath, band meets once per week for 35 minutes, and group lessons once a week for 15 minutes. And then at Woolwich, band meets once per week for 45 minutes, and group lessons once per week for 20 minutes.
Have I answered your question? Okay, Bill?
Mr. Moderator, when this issue was first brought to me as a member of the board a couple of months ago, I suggested to the parents who were working very hard to support Kathy's additional time that they bring an amendment to this meeting. It didn't look like a servo finance committee, and I believed in the budget that we had developed. And it didn't look as though this was going to fly as a part of that budget. But this is the one pledge where the citizens can make a difference here tonight. And I suggest, I suggested to them that they be here, they're here pretty much in force. And I support the additional funding for Kathy. She wasn't cut, she had 2.0 and surrendered 0.5 historically, so that she could stay purely with the band. So it's not a question of help us schedule the cutting someone programmatically. But I agree that she does a tremendous amount of work in the community and in the school. And I fully support the amendment.
Okay, anybody else who speaks of the amendment? Yes?
Hello, I'm Andrew Shaw. I'm from Phippsburg. Almost 10 years ago, I was a little fourth grader in the Pittsburgh Elementary School. I had just started learning trumpet with Kathy Downing. And to be frank, I was a third. And because I was a grader, I wasn't really enjoying band much. Until after a few individual lessons, something clicked with me, and it was Kathy. And I started improving my a lot, and band, and my music education, et cetera. I continued to band with Kathy Downing for the rest of my elementary school career, third grade. Then when I entered middle school, I played with the Woolwich Central School, you know, middle level bands. I also played with Kathy Downing's B-band, which is a band, she runs out of the St. John's School area. And now as a college student, I'm playing in my middle band. I'm also volunteering with the Bath Municipal Band. And this band experience for me was something that made my experience at Pittsburgh Elementary School unique. And made my experience at Pittsburgh Elementary School one of the highlights of my young life. And it also helps create a passion in my, in my life from then to now that is invaluable. And I will continue playing instruments as long as I'm able. I will continue enjoying that. And without Kathy, without my staff, I'm not sure that I would be the same person who, with the same amount of success that I have. And without this extra half-day, the band, yes, will still go on, but it will not be quite the same experience. Kathy will not be able to provide the same amount of attention and effort and time and energy that she had before. And I think that that's why this happening is so essential.
Okay, I guess we've discussed this quite a bit. Unless there are any other people who want to speak to the amendment, all those who are in favor of amending Article Two by adding $7,100 to the article, raise your pink cards, those in favor. Opposed? Alright, the amendment passes. So we've added that to the amount. Now, I understand that there is somebody from Woolwich that wants to add something to this, too?
I'd like to make a motion to increase this budget line by $8,215 to reinstate Article 5, five days a week. Currently it's four days a week.
So the number is 8,215. Okay, you have a second to that amendment? Okay? Is a discussion and explanation of that amendment?
So about five years ago, budget crisis, our art program got cut after four days. So Laura ended up going to Fisher Mitchell School. So as positions have been gradually reinstated, Art is one of the last ones, and he's not. That's why we're asking that this addition be put in. Adding state also impacts Fisher Mitchell School. What happens right now down there is that Laura teaches one day, and they have another teacher there that teaches the other two days. So they have two different teachers that are teaching in an art room. So Woolwich increases to five days a week. George would pick up the three days at Fisher Mitchell, and then he would have full-time at Woolwich. These two art teachers are never at the same school for Late Start Wednesdays, which is a professional development day. So they are also not able to collaborate with their school. They're not on the same page with fellow staff members for developing instructional and cultural vision of their school. And they can't collaborate with their art teachers as well as if they were both at their same school. This addition to the district of $8,215 would impact over 600 students, because it would be our students that would be impacted as well as Fisher Mitchell's. So that's quite a few students, and it's the population of Woolwich and Bath, because all students in Bath do go to Fisher Mitchell School. So as we continue at Woolwich to increase our population, we have not increased our time for our program. We have increased life skills, pre-K, we have a gifted talented program. But we have not increased the time that a teacher needs to best plan to teach for these classes. So please consider this motion to restore our full-time at Woolwich. This would hire one art teacher for all three days at Fisher Mitchell. Both teachers would increase their time to deliver their class, time to deliver classes. They would collaborate, they'd be invested in their school, and enhance critical thinking and learning of over 600 students in RSG One. All for $8,215.
Any other discussion of the amendment? Seeing none, then all of those in favor of increasing the amount of money in Article Two by $8,215, raise your pink cards. Opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. Are there any other amendments? Alright, we need a motion to pass.
The last five years to eight years, a tremendous amount of money has been cut from the teaching budget for all the schools in this district. And I would like to make an amendment adding $1.5 million to enhance the budget of Fisher Mitchell, Diagnose, VMS, and Morse High School to be used to enhance either languages, support staff for teaching, honors programs, and other kinds of courses that have been cut out of our schools. Honors English teachers were cut out of Morse High School. There are very few electives that students can take at Morse High School. We know that in Fisher Mitchell and Diagnose, teachers have also been cut, both support teachers and regular teachers. So I would urge everyone to add some additional money into the budget that can be used at the discretion of the administrators of RSG One going towards the teaching budgets of the Bath schools.
I am going to rule your motion out of order. It is a significant change to this budget. It's a significant change to the whole meeting and the general public who are not here tonight. And all of the towns have not had the opportunity to know, they haven't been notified that such a change was going to be made. These other changes are small, but that one is significant enough that I'm going to rule it out of order. If you wish to challenge my decision, you can make a motion that you would like to have the body of the meeting or rule my decision.
I have a question. Is it because of the amount of money?
Precisely.
So could I make a motion that $800,000 goes towards those?
Anything over $10,000, $15,000, $20,000, I'm going to rule it out of order.
$15,000. Alright, but I'd like $20,000 to be added to the budget.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the amendment? Yes?
Everyone who is from Bath, and I just want to say that I think we can't continue to go on and like just cutting people and then adding kids that end in a way that's nearly inequity. And so this, this is how we're going to start doing business. If we don't trust our school board and our administrators to create a budget that works for our kids. And so now the kids at Phippsburg are going to have two more days to spend compared to the kids at Bath and more art in Woolwich. And I just think we need a common place that's educational for me for our students. And so, you know, I'd like the $20,000 so that the kids at Fisher Mitchell could have two days to band, and some teachers taught how to play the instrument, the drums. So I support this amendment, because why not? If we're just going to start adding what we want back into budget. And I support what I want, but the house... what I want, that the House of Kids can, but I want all the kids that have two days of Sam that want to play instruments. So it has to be about equity and it has to be about fairness and, and what I'm saying.
The way that the amendment has been stated is just adding plain twenty thousand dollars. It doesn't say where it's going to be spent. So that, the way the amendment reads right now would be up to the school committee to put it where they deem it was needed. Is there anybody else to speak on this amendment? John?
I think, um, I, I'd say that our Pittsburgh band participation rate is about ninety-plus percent. And I know with some of the other schools' participation rate is about fifty-plus percent. This was an issue that was really important at Pittsburgh and I would encourage those from other schools to research what your school need is and to come forward at meetings like this and do that. We as, um, parents came forward to several meetings with, with the board here to bring this amendment forward and we weren't successful in that manner. And so this is where we're coming. This is true democracy. So I think if there's, and I think we should embrace our uniqueness of our schools. Um, I know somebody mentioned Woolwich has an intelligent program. I don't know if Pittsburgh has, we might have one, but it's not as big as maybe Woolwich is. Um, there's definitely, we need to embrace the uniqueness of our schools. And I feel like, you know, Woolwich has money for their athletic program. Pittsburgh doesn't have money for their athletic program because they have, they have a middle school there. Um, I just think that it's more for us to embrace our uniqueness and I think we also need to remember that these issues, if there's a specific issue with the Bath schools, then by all means bring it forward, bring it to this meeting. That's, um, where I'm from.
Any, anyone else?
John Dever, I'm from the town. Um, I happily support increasing the arts funding in any of our schools, but I do think that, uh, we do have to keep in mind the equity issue, um, moving forward. And, and I have to say, the school board does a wonderful job and, um, really don't get the appreciation you deserve. And so I know there's a lot of artwork that's gone into the budget, but I would suggest that maybe what you're hearing is that, um, the people are feeling like the, the cuts have gone too deep. Um, I've lived in Bath for fifteen years and, um, and it's been very discouraging to see every year to see people getting cut, positions getting cut. Um, so maybe going forward, we can take this proposal to heart that people are ready to start building strength in our schools again, in the arts. Um, I was in Quebec this weekend and, uh, was amazed, I've been there several times, and I'm always amazed at how many of the young people there speak beautiful English and yet we don't have any language education, um, or language education, um, below the, the high school level that I'm aware of, um, in our schools. And I, I think that's really quite a shame. So I, I am in favor of this amendment if the school board is able to use that money to address perhaps equity issues in some of the other schools and look to restore maybe some of the arts cuts or language cuts that I think have impacted our students or our kids in a very negative way. Thank you.
Uh, so I, in general, am...
To please identify yourself, put down your phone.
I'm Ian Woolwich. Uh, so I'm generally very supportive. Uh, I wouldn't be here if I weren't, well, necessarily, but I am. And I just want to remind people of maybe an unintended, unintended consequence of adding too much into budget today because we've had lots of time meetings or lots of budget meetings that our school board has put in lots of time, which is very transparent. And we look around here and there aren't that many people here. And we know this is a two-step budget process and we want to be hesitant of the fact that it could be going down and that that would be a bad situation. Um, and I don't, I just, we need to keep that into consideration before we add a whole slew of additional, um, pieces to this budget. And then, over here.
My name's Alison Cosgrove. I live in Woolwich and I'm also an employee of Pittsburgh by Sapp School. So I'd like to speak to this as both a parent and as a professional.
Do you speak a little slower so that people can understand you?
Yes, I can. Um, just to give you a human perspective here, I work two days at two different schools. Um, I teach guidance. I teach many kids five, I teach five classes a day. I see kids in every class. And, um, I have kids come to me all the time. They need to visit Mrs. Cosgrove and share all this information. And there are times I say I can see them like three weeks. So I just want to share, it is, you do need to sort of look at the needs. And I'm not trying to get a soapbox and advocate for myself, but I think we do need to be mindful of what services are offered in what schools. And making sure that our children are being serviced. Um, I think there's a real velocity of mental health needs services in this district. Um, and I can tell you this from the kids, this has, I've got to tell you about this kid. I'm worried about this kid. And, um, kids to share some pretty amazing things they're struggling with. Um, so I'm hoping that, you know, we can start to look at this and everyone's global perspective as well. I think we need to be careful what we're adding in and making sure we really are servicing the kids and the pregnant families in the district. And we all know that for many who have kids and if children aren't supported and are struggling with mental health needs, that they're not being able to attend and learn. And there's gonna be disruption with my classroom and teachers at the camp. So, uh, I just kind of want to share that. I see that happening because I work in the classroom. And then I see that happening because I work in the classroom. Um, so I can tell you that there are many kids who I need to say that I can't because of my restrictions between the classes and two different schools. And I'm not asking for any more money, but I just want to point out that there are a lot of needs in our schools. I really want to be thoughtful about how we're serving the kids.
Okay, Patrick?
Just to make one comment. I don't mean this in a way that's negative, adding anything into the budget or reducing the budget, but over the last three years, I just want people to be aware that this board has been very supportive and we have not had any cuts in the last three years unless numbers have really dictated that program is really not going to sustain. So, so I mean, last year we had in, just as an example, alternative education, expansion of life skills, pre-k spots, guidance, support staff, which means several in text to help our students, and oral music at the high school level. And then this year, um, and the reason I felt like I needed to say something is in this budget is middle school foreign language back in this budget. It's probably not stacked to the way that we wanted, but it's a beginning to build that back in. And then facilities, um, the band, the bond that you hopefully voted for last year, the amount of money that's going into our facilities, which again, I know is not to teach them in the classroom, but a way that we're taking care of our buildings like we should be and as well as hopefully as soon as you walk in, the exciting, um, either new or renovated construction project that stays supportive for, for our high school. So.
Okay, Pat, no more? John, I make a motion and we move your question.
Second.
Okay. Alright, the motion has been moved to Cut Off Committee. All those who are in favor of cutting off the pay, raise your pink cards. Opposed? Okay, we've cut off the committee. So we have before us an amendment to Article Two to add twenty thousand dollars to Article Two, the article for regular instruction. All those in favor of the amendment which would add twenty thousand dollars, raise your pink cards. Opposed? Okay, the amendment loses. So, at this point, we need a motion for the amended article which would add in the fifteen thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars to the amount that was printed there. Do we have from the board that amount?
How much is amended?
We gotta have the amount. I stated what you were amending in bottom line of course. I didn't do the addition.
The amended amount is ten million five five nine five six six.
Okay. The amended amount for Article Two would be ten million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Do we have a motion on that motion?
I make a motion and we approve that amount though.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. All those in favor of the amended amount for Article Two, raise your pink cards. Opposed? Okay, Article Two passes for the amended amount of ten million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Be passed by head time if we do this to every article. Article Three, to see what some regional school unit will be authorized to expand for special education. The recommended amount is four million six hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. We have a motion on Article Three. We have a second? Okay. Any discussion, explanation of Article Three?
This cost center is down one hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars from last year's total of four million seven hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and nineteen. We have maintained our current programs in this budget and have not included anything new.
Again? One thing I just want to mention, uh, quickly is, as you'll notice, uh, many of these articles are reduced, uh, from last year. This isn't a result of cost cutting. It's a result of the loss of the West Bath School and the staffing and programs that went along with that in the district. So, um, if you're trying to compare last year's budget to this year's budget or last year's articles to this year's articles, when we hear the phrase that this cost center is down, uh, more likely than not to result of, um, the loss of the West Bath School.
Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion to pass Article Three for the recommended amount. All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Article Four, to see what some regional school unit will be authorized to expand for career and technical education. The recommended amount is one million two hundred and four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Who's speaking to Article Four?
I believe it's Article Eight written.
The recommended amount. Okay. Is anybody making explanation?
Yes, this cost center is down thirty thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars from last year's total of one million two hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-six. Uh, the majority of this decrease is a reflection of personnel changes and health insurance elections. All programs remain the same as are currently offered. Perpetual, electrical, drafting, commercial arts, health occupations, culinary arts, early childhood, welding, and the automotive program.
Okay. Are there any questions or comment on Article Four? If not, all those in favor of Article Four for the recommended amount? Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article Five, to see what some regional school unit will be authorized to expand for other construction. The recommended amount is five hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Who is speaking to Article Five?
I'm moving Article, your article.
Okay, for the recommended amount. Second?
I second.
Okay. Any comments, questions, explanation?
This cost center, this cost center is down one thousand nine hundred and eight from last year. This cost center includes funds to provide students with both curricular and athletic activities. An increase in the annual fee for the athletic trainer this coming year is the major reason for the increase.
Okay, any questions for the discussion? If not, Steve? Okay, all those in favor of Article Five for the recommended amount? Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article Six, to see what some of the regional school unit will be authorized to expand for student and staff support. The recommended amount is two million three hundred thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Who's the article that's written? Okay, we have a second? Do we have any explanation?
This cost center is down one hundred thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars from last year's total of two million four hundred and one thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. This cost center covers funding for guidance, health, technology, improvement of instruction, library, and student assessment. All salaries and benefits, program costs are included here. This funding retains all the programs that there has not been any, any additional added.
Okay, any questions on Article Six? If not, all those in favor of Article Six for recommended amount? Opposed? Passes for the recommended amount. Article Seven, to see what some regional school unit will be authorized to expand for system administration. The recommended amount is five hundred seventy-one thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
I move the article as written.
Second?
I second.
Okay, any explanation?
This cost center is down fifty-six thousand three hundred and five dollars over last year. The major reason for this decrease is not filling the position at central office at one hundred percent. The workload has been redistributed to achieve that decision.
Any questions about Article Seven? If not, all those in favor of Article Seven for the recommended amount? Opposed? Passes for the recommended amount. Article Eight, to see what some of the regional school unit will be authorized to expand for school administration. Recommended amount is one million four hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. A motion on Article Eight?
I move the article for the recommended amount.
Second?
I second.
Any explanation?
This cost center is down one hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and eight over last year's total of one million six hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-seven. The major reason for the decrease is the withdrawal of West Bath. Funds necessary to operate principal office at West Bath has been removed from the RSG line item.
Okay. Any questions on Article Eight? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eight for recommended amount? Opposed? Passes for the recommended amount. Article Nine, to see what some of the regional school unit will be authorized to expand for transportation. The recommended amount is one million one hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Who's making my amendment?
The amendment that's approved.
Okay, we have a second on the motion on Article Nine?
I second.
Okay. Are there any discussion? Charlie?
Hi, I'm Charlie. I'm from Pittsburgh and I make a motion that we amend the article to provide three buses for Pittsburgh. Um, instead of two, um, we use, do I even talk about an hour, do I wait?
Yep.
Yes?
Yep.
Alright, um, we have always currently had at least three buses for the town. And last year we were downsized to two buses because there was a need for a bus, um, in Bath. And as a result, our kids arrive in bus, both buses, the kids are on the bus for about an hour. They're arriving late to school, um, which is honestly the bigger concern here that they're arriving late to school. The buses can't start any earlier The buses can't start any earlier because they start their high school and their middle school runs at 6:05 in the morning. They drop off the high school students up to 40 minutes ahead of time so the buses can get back in time to pick up the elementary kids. I see this if we were to bring back our third bus as something that would not only benefit the elementary students, but something that would benefit the older kids as well. They wouldn't have to be left at the high school, you know, up to 40 minutes ahead of time. It would hopefully help the overall situation in Pittsburgh. And, I mean, honestly, the big result is hopefully getting our children to school on time.
Okay, do we have a second for Charlene's amendment?
I'll second, yeah.
Okay. Now, do we, does the staff have a number that we would change the Article Y in order to do this? The towards we have for that bus is to be 27,000. The 27,000, so we would be amending Article 9 by increasing it by $27,000 to add a third bus in Pittsburgh. Is the further discussion of the amendment? Yes?
I'm really concerned that we were told that we can't spend more than 20, now it's 27.
That's just an arbitrary, that's an arbitrary number that I'm...
I'm not comfortable with arbitrary number because it feels like there's a sense of not backdoor politics going on, but I'm beginning to say this is too big, this is too small, we've run number, this is too large, now we're accepting one of 27. I just want to clarify the... I mean, the reason we have Robert Duke's orders and reports of orders is for a purpose, so... I'm just a little concerned that it's getting out of control with random decisions.
Well, I apologize if it's kind of difficult for you to do this, but this does not usually happen. And when you come and you... The reason that this piece of paper is printed, it has, the state law says that it has to be out there in the public places for so many days is to notify people as to what is happening. When you put a number up like a million five, and if this group or maybe a smaller group possibly has that number, what are the people out in the streets gonna say? What are they gonna say? They're gonna say you snuck something in. Perhaps the 27,000 is the same way. But, it's... It's allowed. I could have let her, her motion for a million five stay in there. But how many people could have voted for it?
My concern is that...
Take the mic.
I'm really worried it'd be difficult. My concern isn't with the 1.5, my concern is where she was asked what dollar value, and you said, "I don't know between 10 and 20." This is 27, so, I mean, is it 35, is it 20, is it... I mean, that's my...
If I had said 50, would it make any difference?
Well, that's my question, I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
Well, the 20 was voted down, so why would the, why would something that was more than 20 have been voted for?
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying...
I understand.
Amy Leonard-Bulwich, I think, I think you're kind of missing quite a little bit on the list, maybe. But I want, I think that the point is, I think you should have held it over. But I do want to keep track of the track. But I, but I think that's a good learning...
I can't, I... You gotta hold the mic up or speak more clearly because I can't understand, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Just, this is a good learning opportunity for us all here that probably if it had gone through, we probably would have just voted it down. You know? But maybe that's actually the people here, and it should stay. But my question was this. With the bus, with buses, actually the buses.
We're not talking about the buses. Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, I wanted, I was just curious, I, you know, I'm uncomfortable paying 27,000 dollars back in the budget for a bus, but I think there's a... That it might have to happen. But, I want to know why the bus was pulled from Pittsburgh to join, you know, to go to Bath? Was the reason, you know, was there a good reason for that? Can they be without a bus again? Can you pull it back? It worked, it went back to Pittsburgh?
Tim?
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and speak to this, to your question, generally to the article or to the amendment, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Patrick if you don't mind, to give some more specifics. This was an issue that had come before the board as we were developing the budget. And this is something that both the board looked into, the principal looked into down in Pittsburgh, and the superintendent looked into across district. In terms of the length of time that students are on the bus, at times it is a long period of time that students are on the bus, but we find that that period of time is shared by students going to other schools, both in Woolwich, both in Bath. Part of the reason the decision was made wasn't necessarily pulling the bus from Pittsburgh and moving it over to Bath, but it goes back to, you know, a time, and again, I don't have a specific date, three, five years ago, women made some cut. Since we've taken a look at this as a board, the superintendent has actually ridden on the bus. We have taken steps to try and increase the amount of time, that, reduce the amount of time that students are on the bus by speeding up how that bus is picking up students so that they're not, you know, dawdling and hitting on the student, there's not a lot of chit-chat, the bus gets to school. But this is a situation that the board is aware of. It's something that we're looking into, and it's something that we're trying to address. But it is a concern that we have across district, it's not just specific to Pittsburgh. We see it in Bath, and we also see it in Woolwich, with some of the Woolwich schools. And I'm gonna turn it over to Patrick in case there's some specific data that he wants to add to that.
Yeah, I didn't bring all the detail with me tonight, but there is one bus in each of our communities that heads close to an hour to you. And so, it's across the board. Bath Bus Service is our private times contract, that's what we have it with. They're a pleasure to work with, we're always working with them to try to find out more efficient ways and different ways that we can do things. I do believe it was three years ago that, you know, we just have, we have too many students on some of our buses, you know, the capacity issue. Where we had to, Bath Bus Service's recommendation was to pull a bus from Pittsburgh and bring it into another town because we just had, we had that rule on our buses.
Hi there, Amanda Mason. And speaking of the bus, my children are the very last in Pittsburgh for the kids to get off the bus. We've had one year where the kids actually got off the bus before you all took the third bus away. My kids get off the bus, they're sick, they're throwing up. These little kids can't do this, they just can't do this. My oldest, my, my youngest is getting up at 5:15, he would not get home until almost 3:00 for the BMS. My two that go to Pittsburgh, they have to get up at the crack of dawn, and they're not even home until 4:00, 4:05 in the afternoon. That's a long day to expect out of the little kids. When they used to get dropped off at 3:20, 3:50, I think it was. That's a huge, that's a big difference, and I'd love to have that bus back. Charlene, you're running back to back on that one. There comes, so I drive, I drive them now, every day, every, every, every day. I'd like to get the bus back, get a little bit more of a life for them, you know, get them more sleep, so, thank you.
Katie?
For Pittsburgh, there are four buses for the high school, middle school kids in the morning. And then it decreases to three for the afternoon. But I don't believe there's, I mean, no, this is for the high school, middle school kids. And then it goes down to two for the elementary school kids. I'm not sure what our enrollment is in middle school and high school for Pittsburgh, but I know there's 97 students going to Pittsburgh Elementary School. I know a lot of the high school kids have licenses now, and they're driving themselves. And so, I just don't feel, I feel like that should be re-looked at as far as the number of buses that are happening in the morning, and the number that has decreased now in Pittsburgh, only having two buses for the whole elementary school. And I'll, my, my child's commute was added on quite a bit of time too, and I know it's, it's really tough when you're looking at quality across the board because the middle schoolers in Pittsburgh, 10 years old, this is one of the big reasons I thought to keep sixth graders at Pittsburgh several years ago, because it's not adequate sleep and rest for 10-year-old children to be up at 5:00 AM and getting on the bus at 6:00 AM. And I know in the Woolwich Middle School, those, those middle schoolers are getting an hour more sleep than all the other kids here at Bath Middle School. So, I'd really like us to look more at this bus situation.
Okay, now, he right behind, no, no, left, right there.
Holly Spence, I'm from Bath, and I'll probably just cause more anxiety. I am, I think everything you're saying about their kids needing more sleep is extremely valid and important and as a parent in Bath, if that was happening to my kids, I'd really say no, you're a neutral. That being said, as a parent who has a kid at Morse, a kid at Davenport, and a kid at Fisher-Vinchell, I found that it's astonishing to find out that more students are bused from the high school over to the track and field for PBE class. I don't know if that, that is in this transportation portion of the budget, but I think it's important for us to look at how are we using those transportation lines? Are high school students, when we have the oldies periods that we do, can't walk to the track and field for physical education class? We need to look at how we're using that money. And maybe we can take some of that money and support the school that needs a bus.
I'm Jerry Bay from Rousing. I think this is not the place to reorganize the bus system. I understand the needs, and I'd like to suggest that there be a parent opportunity to interact with whoever is making decisions on buses, but this doesn't seem to be the place to sort out all the ins and outs, whether they're in Bath or Pittsburgh or Rousing.
Okay, well, it's ended up here, right here.
My name's Jessica Arsenal, I'm from Pittsburgh. And my only question was, are there other kids who are late to school in other schools?
I mean, if the weather is, look at that weather, obviously we have, you know, most of our kids are late. I've talked with Sandra when I've been down there, you know, maybe this is what I'm there, but I've watched the way that people have been doing it up there, and our two buses in Pittsburgh are getting there on time. I don't know if Sandra watched the, I know there was a little period of confusion there, but it's not coming in late to, based on what feedback I'm getting, and then the least three times I've been down there, when it's been plausible, when it's been good weather.
Okay. Tim?
I just want to add to this, and again, I appreciate the back and forth that's going on. I appreciate the folks that have come out here and are participating in this process. With regard to the bus amendment in general, one thing that I would like everybody to keep in mind is that if, if your child lives 15, 10, 20 miles away from the school, and there are five pickups in between there, just by the nature of the distance and the number of students that are getting picked up, they're gonna have probably a half an hour, 40 minutes bus ride. That depends on weather, and how long it takes the students to get on the bus. What I want you folks to know is, the board is aware of this, it's something that we're working on, and we hope to address this problem long-term. In terms of the process, maybe we weren't clear about this. We start this budget process, as I said, back in January, and we meet with all of the administrators across the district, and meet with the board, and they talk about where they see needs in the district. There's back and forth between the board and the administration, the administration and the superintendent. Finance committee gets to handle the budget. There are a lot of things that we as board members, or as parents, or as members of the community would like to add back into this budget. We would like to increase the budget. But we have to make choices, we can't put everything back. So I'd just like you to keep that in mind, that this isn't something new to the board, and some of the issues that we've brought up are not new to the board. And at times we have to make difficult decisions. And the board, the budget that we're presenting to you is the best budget that we can present based on the means in the district, which was so eloquently put over here, and weighed against the needs of the taxpayers. But I want folks to know that we will continue to work on this bus issue and some of the other issues that we brought up. Thank you.
Okay, so is there somebody here in the front row that had to hand up, who wanted to speak again? Okay, Charlene?
I guess I just wanted to add that it was, an issue that was created last year, three years ago, four years ago, we were told that it was because Fisher-Vinchell needed another bus because of the contract negotiations and the way that they have previously done their things. I think we're talking about the length of the bus ride, but it's, it's, the length, we understand every... There's a lot of times they're riding the bus at the same length. It's not the length, it's the issue of, the big issue here is children not arriving on time. And it's actually, it's still an issue, even though there's been discussion of more efficiently picking up the children and stuff like that. I'm in the school, volunteering four days a week, I see kids arriving, maybe just in the nick of time on the bus, a few minutes later. It's a huge disruption to the classes, the kids, there are kids that should be eating breakfast at school that need that breakfast at school because maybe they can't have it at home. And so, they're going down, getting breakfast, coming back to class. So probably 15 minutes later after school's begun, these kids are still eating breakfast during what should be instruction time. Realistically, you know, kids should be there at least a few minutes before that starting bell to be getting breakfast and stuff. And, yeah, I, the big part is, you know, getting the kids there on time and to start their day, be ready to start their day.
Okay, is there anybody, Gary?
Gary from Pittsburgh. I just want to say that, you know, all these issues have been brought up to the board, and this is a way that the towns can actually show you that they want to increase or make sure that the kids are taken care of. And this is the democracy in, in its importance right here. So, I just want to say that, I mean, I don't, I don't doubt the board at all, they do one job, and this is a way that we can show that we support you and we support the schools by doing everything we're doing.
Okay, now, I guess we have discussed this amendment for enough time. We have amendment to Article 9 which would add $27,000 to Article 9. All those in favor of the amendment raise your big cards. Opposed? The amendment loses. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to pass Article 9 for the recommended amount of $1183,274. All in favor of that article? Opposed? It passes. Article Ten, to see what some regional school unit will be authorized for spending for facilities, management, maintenance, recommended amount is $2,992,812. Who's making a motion on Article Ten?
I move it to be approved as written.
Okay, do we have a motion, a second? Okay, we have a motion to pass Article Ten with the recommended amount. Any discussion or explanation?
This cost center is down $249,782 from last year's total of $3,242,594. Once again, a major reason is the removal of West Bath School. We continue with an improvement on anticipation note in this budget and plan to finalize the budget this year.
Any discussion or questions about Article Ten? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article Eleven, to see what some regional school unit will be authorized for spending for debt service. The recommended amount is $1,712,680. We have a motion on Article Eleven.
I move the article written.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have any explanation?
This article covers principal and interest expenses for the state's support addition to the regional vocational center and Woolwich Central School. There is decrease due to less interest being paid. Final payment for the R C T C project is fiscal year 2017.
Any questions about Article Eleven? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Eleven with the recommended amount? Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article Twelve, to see what some regional school unit will be authorized for spending for other food service transfer, for other debt food service transfer. Recommended amount is $8,000. Who's making a motion on Article Twelve?
I move it to be approved as written.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, any explanation?
This cost center is up $20,000 from last year's total of $60,000. This increase is to help close the gap between revenues and program expenses.
Any questions about Article Twelve? Yes? Wait a minute. Mike?
Hi, I'm Susan from Pittsburgh. Is, is other food service transfer, you're just moving money to accounts or you're moving food between schools?
No?
No, we're, we're moving money to accounts. And I'm going to kick you one more. But it's, that, that program currently runs out of deficit, and so we have to transfer money over so that it breaks even.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of Article Twelve with recommended amount? Opposed? It passes. Okay, now, we've decided where we're going to spend the money, this is how we're going to raise the money to be spent. So Article Thirteen, shall the regional school unit appropriate $22,627,550 for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act? And shall the district raise and assess the following amounts as each municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve? And I'm not going to read all of these numbers, you have them on your sheet, and they, you can see what they are going to do. So we have a motion on Article Thirteen.
I move the article as written, but there's a part of the number.
Do we have a second? Okay. Explanation?
Sure. This article raises the largest portion of the proposed budget. The state has determined that the R S U can operate on a budget of $22,627,549, also known as the E P S calculation, and has determined each municipality's share of the appropriation based upon enrollments and property valuation. The state has further determined that the R S U should be able to raise on its own $13,631,318 of the total $22,627,549 local dollars. If the R S U does raise the $13,631,318, the state will contribute and subsidize the amount of $8,996,231 to bring the total to, as I said before, $22,627,549.
Okay, so everybody understand that? Rick?
Yes, John.
Wait, come on.
John, what do you amend the amount that we amended, there was a couple articles?
That's coming, it doesn't, it doesn't affect this one.
Okay, thank you.
Comes in fifteen. Any other questions? Yes, over here?
Hi, I'm Lawrence Kovacs from Bath. I want to start just by acknowledging how much hard work, basically free labor, and a lot of hard work that the board has put in to put together this budget. I also want to acknowledge Patrick, your element's job is really getting word out and more people be here. I don't have exact numbers, but I'm guessing it's thousands of people who pay taxes between Bath, Pittsburgh, West Bath, Woolwich, and if you look around this area, there aren't very many of us here. With, meaning no disrespect, Mr. Morse, I think we could certainly make a statement if we did pass amendment for $1,500,000. That would get people's attention. I think we really need to encourage public discourse, public involvement in our schools. I don't know, you know, that's a pretty antagonistic way to do it, but somehow we need more people than all of us here today, just want to say that.
Any other comments on Article Thirteen?
May I?
No?
Okay, and I'm just, I read my script, now I'm going to do my best to really message this article, I'm trying to explain it to you. The process that we go through when we read these articles, the order that they come in, a lot of what we say is dictated by the state. This particular article, the $22 million figure is what the state says that we can run the district on. It's based on calculations that they do on how many students per classroom, how many teachers per classroom. There is no district in the state that actually can run their district for the amount that the state says. But that stated, this article is the amount that the state says we need to run our district. And it says, if we raise the $13 million locally, they will make up the difference between what we've raised locally and what they say it takes to run the district. Later on, we will have articles that deal with debt service, not included in this factor, and then those additional costs to run the district of that will be the amended article. So if that enlightens anybody, I'm grateful if I confused you, my fault.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, John?
I think education is a very important, worthy cause, and I'm just wondering, what is the per pupil cost of a student per district?
Yeah, do you have that for a while?
Based upon our cost sharing formula, it says different ways of looking at per pupil student. It's $12,823.
I think we need to keep in mind when we're thinking about education, the average cost to incarcerated inmates at a county jail, a state prison is thirty, approximately $30,000 a year. So this is, all these articles that we're fighting for, things we're looking for are positive, and I think we need to put more effort into this. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to pass Article Thirteen as written. All those in favor raise your pink cards. Opposed? It passes as printed. Okay, Article Fourteen, to see what some regional school unit will raise and appropriate for the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state-funded school construction projects, non-state-funded portions of school construction projects and minor capital projects in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve. The recommended amount is $760,672. Who is making a motion on Article Fourteen?
I move the article as written for the recommended amount.
Do we have a second? Do we have an explanation?
Non-state-funded debt service is the amount of money needed for the annual payments on the regional school unit's long-term debt for major capital school construction projects and minor capital renovation projects that is not approved for the state subsidy. The bonding of this long-term debt is previously approved by the voters or other legislative body. The breakdown is as follows. Bath Middle School, $355,093. Morse High School, $10,473. The system-wide bond, $345,318. And Woolwich Central School, $49,788.
Questions on Article Fourteen? If there are none, all in favor of Article Fourteen with recommended amount? Opposed? It passes. Now, Article Fifteen, you have a sheet in your handout. There was an error, a calculation error made when the warrant was printed, and the amount of money was overstated by, as you can see in the top line, $88,800, which was the adult education and the capital expenditure of $25,000. And these are in Articles Seventeen and Eighteen, but they were inadvertently added into this so that you, you can see that in red, there are corrected numbers. So I will read the corrected. To see what Article Fifteen, to see what some regional school unit will raise and appropriate, the recommended amount is $2352,293 in additional local funds which exceed the state's essential programs and services allocation model by the recommended amount of $1,823,231, as required fund budget recommended by the regional school unit board of directors. The board of directors recommends $2352,293 for additional local funds and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model The additional local funds represent local costs to support the regional school unit school programs that are not included in the state's funding model, including costs for co-curricular and extra extracurricular activities, transportation, and special education services. Board of directors recommends a yes vote. This is going to be a written ballot. Now, we need a motion and a second on Article Fifteen. Who makes the motion?
The board recommends a yes vote.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. Now, we, we have a motion for this article on the floor. However, you have amended Article Two. And when you amended Article Two, you added $15,315 in red. So we need an amendment to add that $15,315 to these, the $2352,293. So we have a motion to amend Article Fifteen by that amount.
Make a motion, John, if we pass that amount.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. Okay. Proper? Proper amount would be $2367,608. So do we have, we have a motion on that amendment? We did, or we already do that? Are there any questions? Other than whether or not I've got it together? Over there?
I'm Lisa Gaskin, I'm a resident in Bath, and I'm also a teacher at the Pittsburgh Elementary School. I just have a question for the board about how that extra money is going to be raised, that's in the budget.
You're asking how that money will be raised?
Yep.
The money will be raised, again, because this is a state mandated process, this is a two-part validation, so we will not leave the room this evening until this group votes to approve a budget. That budget will include the amount that has been amended, and then I think it's June
Nine?
June nine, we will go to referendum in the communities, and every rubbish voter is an opportunity to either vote that amended budget or not.
Thank you for your time.
What you wanted him to ask was, it'll be allocated to each of the towns as their, in addition to their amount that they'll have to raise. Any other questions? All right, so we are going to have, need to have our ballot clerk come forward. You have?
You have to vote on the amendment?
Yes, you do. Like I said.
No, no, you have to vote on the amendment, then we just...
Yes, the, the amended amounts, and I'll read them once more, is the first amount is $2367,608, and the second amount, the replacement of $1,823, is $1,800,823. and the second amount, the replacement of $1,823, is $1,838,316. So we have amendment on the floor. All in favor of amending Article 15? Opposed? All right, the amendment carries. So now we are going to, we need a motion to pass the Article 15 as amended. Make a motion right when you pass the article. We have a second? Second. Okay. Now, you have a blue-white written ballot. You mark your yes or no on there. Do not fold. Do not fold. When you come forward, show your pink card to the ballot clerk, and put your card in the box. So we will take a pause while you vote. Okay, we call a meeting back to order. The results of the written ballot on Article 15 are yes, eight, two, no, five. So Article 15 passes as amended. Next article is Article 16. See what some of the regional school unit will authorize the school committee to expend for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016, from the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state-funded school construction projects, additional local fund for school purposes under the major vice statutes titled 20-A, section 15690, unextended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. The recommended amount, and this is changed to reflect the number in Article 15, is $27,247,743. Do we have a motion to pass Article 16 for that amount?
I move the article past with recommended amount.
Okay, we have a second? Okay. Are there any questions on Article 16? This is the whole ball of wax, all the money that they've spent from pre-k through 12. All right, all in favor of Article 16? Opposed? It passes. Article 17, to see if the regional school unit will appropriate $276,303 for adult education and raise $63,800 as the local share, with authorization to expend any additional, incidental, or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the adult education program. Recommended amount is $63,800. We have a motion on Article 17.
Move the article as written.
A second? Okay. Any explanation, any questions?
Adult education serves over 250 people in our community. This article authorizes the RSU to appropriate $276,303 for now being appropriated. We raised just $63,800 for local share. The remainder of the adult education budget comes from tuition fees and subsidy, and certainly is paying off.
Okay, any questions on Article 17? If not, all in favor, raise your pink cards. Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article 18, capital reserve funds. Shall the board of directors be authorized to raise $25,000 for the previously established capital reserve fund and be further authorized to expend the funds if necessary? Board of directors recommend a yes vote. We have a motion on Article 18.
Move the article as written.
Okay, we have a second? Any questions? Yes, Sue? Mike?
What? My first question, is this $25,000, is it the other number or is it additional?
It's additional.
I'm going to make a motion to reduce this number by the $15,000 number that we added it to make the budget flat when we vote.
We have a second? Second. Are you old enough to vote?
Yes.
He registered today!
We have an amendment to reduce the amount in Article 18 to $10,000. Is there any discussion, questions, rebate from? Tim?
Yeah, but one thing I would mention is I appreciate the motion to try and balance the budget based on what the board has recommended. The thing to keep in mind is this is an article that we've been adding to this fund, I don't know, six, seven, eight years, something like that, and when I first joined the RSU board, there was no capital reserve fund. So I would just caution you that this is the money that we do have set aside in case, you know, we lose boiler or a major electrical failure or we need to delever the funds, and we slowly build this up every time.
Any other comments, questions? Sue?
I'm away. What's the total right now?
$275,000.
Thank you. And if there's, you know, I'm not beholden one way or the other, but I noticed the board maybe put out a number, and so if anyone else on the board has an opinion, I'd love to hear it.
I think you would find the facilities that we have, most of them are pretty old as far as seating systems are concerned. They're limited on tissue and paper. They could go anytime. $275,000 is not very much.
Okay, any other comments, John?
Just want to put the facilities directors to retreat, please.
Raise your hand so we can get the mic together.
What'd you want? So my thing, you're going to want Peter to pay Paul is what you're looking to do right now with the 25, reducing the 25,000. The reason we put in capital reserve is take the boilers at the high school, they were put in in 1988, if you do math, boilers last about 30 years. We've only retooled so many times. That will try to get extended until we make a decision whether we renovate or build new. Same with that new boilers, this was put in in '82. I think we're high-graduated in '82, and that was 30 some years ago. So again, we've extended life of these boilers as far as we can. We've also done capital reserve through the bond, comparison stuff. Last year, we removed two of the boilers that had to be here, tried to extend them out another eight to 10 years, because we're also working on what to do with the elementary schools in eight to 10 years. It's a forward plan if you want to look into that. Again, I mean, Peter paid Pauls, not always as a practice. All right, on that. Deborah, John?
Okay, anybody else? All right, we have an amendment to delete $15,000 from Article 18, so that it changes the amount to $10,000. All those in favor of the amendment, hold up your card. Opposed? Okay, amendment fails. So now we have a motion to pass Article 18 for the recommended, as written. All those in favor of Article 18? Opposed? It passes. Article 19, shall the board of directors be authorized to expend up to $225,000 from the capital reserve fund for preliminary costs, including design costs, for the Morse High School construction project that is placed on the state funding priority list approved by the main state board of education, the project. And if the voters of the regional school unit give reference and approvals for the project financing, shall the board of directors be authorized to reimburse the capital reserve fund from approved project funding sources? The board of directors recommends a vote, yes, vote. We have a motion on Article 19.
I move the article as written.
Second? Okay, any?
The majority of these costs, with the exception of one $15,000 contract for the Morse construction project, the district has to pay those costs upfront. And then when the state board of education approves a budget for our building project, then we will get reimbursed for all of those costs, all of those contract costs. So this is a way, advisory attorneys, to be able to fund this upfront and then be able to reimburse our capital account that we were just talking about, instead of putting $225,000, $250,000 into this budget to increase the commitment to the local taxpayers. If we were, so you may be specific, if we were to have something catastrophic happen, you know, we would be able, a couple of things. We could put a freeze on our budget during the middle of the year, which we don't like to do, but if we had to do, we'd do that, as well as work with our architectural board and the department of education to work out a situation that would work for all of us. And worst case, the following year is bill form money into the regular budgets.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of Article 19? Opposed? Passes as written. Article 20, in addition to the amount in Article 16, shall the voters authorize board of directors to accept and extend any state, federal, and other grants and receipts during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016, for school purposes provided that such grants, aid, and receipts do not require expenditures of local funds not previously appropriated. Board of directors recommends a yes vote. We have a motion on Article 20?
I move the article as written.
Andrew, a second? Okay. Any questions, explanation?
This article authorized the RSU to seek other resources of funding, such as state, federal, or private grants, to support education and expend them during this fiscal year.
Okay, any questions? If not, all in favor of Article 20? Opposed? It passes. A motion to adjourn the meeting is in order. Okay, all in favor? Motion to adjourn. Thank you very much.